Able to. Thank you. So let's call the planning and zoning meeting to order. Michelle, do you mind calling the role?
Sure. Mr. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Sebastianic.
Here.
Mr. Rowena.
Here.
Ms. Lang Dallas.
Here.
Ms. Wells.
Here.
Mr. Schulman.
Here.
And Ms. Lankowski.
Here.
And Mr. Bryce.
Here. Thank you.
That's everybody I see right now.
Agreed. Here's Steve.
Here's Steve.
Um, great.
Great.
Steve, I'm getting some feedback for you. Thank you. Um, so we have eight members here. Both Diana and Anna will be seated for the applications tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. Um, so our first application is a continuation of the twenty twenty-five dash five-six special permit CAM Alpha Five MK nineteen-day LLC at Nineteen Day Street, District Two, Block Fifty-Eight, Lot Forty-four, special permit for a proposed multifamily building with thirty-two units. And at this point, it is the rebuttal to the public comment, report, and recommended action. Attorney Sachi, are you representing this project?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I am.
Great. Before that, I see that Commissioner Jones has joined us here just for the record as well. Uh, but go ahead, Attorney Sachi.
You. For the record, my name is Liz Sachi. I'm a partner at Carmody Torrent Sandec in Hennessy, ten fifty-five Washington Boulevard in Stamford. And I represent the applicant on this proposal before you. There are three applications, special permit, coastal site plan and site plan. I want to thank the commissioners, the staff, and the public for attending the October twenty-second meeting, which went late into the evening, and we appreciate your time that evening and your time tonight. To summarize, the project proposes the construction, use, and occupancy of a new six-story, thirty-two-unit apartment to be constructed on part of the existing parking lot. The existing fifty-six-unit apartment would remain. The site rear building, which houses the distillery, would be demolished. Seventy-three parking spaces are now required. Seventy-four are provided. And that is because the affordable units in the existing residential building are at eighty percent SMI. Parking required is one-point-three per unit. Um, since the affordable units in the new structure would be at sixty percent SMI, the parking ratio is reduced to one-to-one. So we need thirty-two parking spaces for that new structure, plus one space for the small leasing office that we are proposing. Overall, the project proposes eighty-eight parking spaces post-construction. That's an increase of fourteen over the seventy-four that exists today, plus ten tandem spaces. These spaces in the calculations were noted on the site plan presented to you last month and and were submitted as part of the application. So seventy-three spaces plus thirty-three equal one-hundred-six. That number can then be reduced by ten percent to ninety-six spaces, since we're within a quarter mile of the South Norwalk train get train station. So we are proposing eighty-eight spaces, requiring a waiver of eight spaces. That ten percent reduction has been codified in your regulations, and that is not something that we are seeking by way of a text amendment. It is a it is a waiver that is already permitted. So we're here tonight to answer the questions that were raised by the public and present our rebuttal. No new information or documentation has been submitted by us since the October twenty-second hearing. A portion, public portion of the hearing was closed, and we trust that no new correspondence has been submitted to you and made part of the record since the public portion of the hearing was closed on the twenty-second as well. First, we're not unsympathetic to the tenants' concerns. Frankly, it makes good business sense and would be in my client's best interest to minimize disruption to the tenants and mitigate impacts to the tenants, so as to avoid requests for lease termination, rent abatement, or rent reduction or other claims. But a planning and zoning commission, as we indicated, cannot decide the rights of tenants or adjudicate landlord tenant matters or disputes. Some concerns raised by the public during the hearing are outside the scope of this commission and outside your jurisdiction, no matter how passionate they have may have been presented to you. When acting on a special permit application or other applications, this commission is charged to abide by the standards set forth in your regulations and to apply those standards to the project before you. So, quote, "When deciding whether the proposed use of the property is permitted under the zoning regulations," it is. It has, you also have to determine that the standards of the zoning regulations have been satisfied. They have by evidence, evidence by your staff review, by the municipal sign-offs, and by the plans, reports, and testimony presented to you. And lastly, that conditions to present, protect public health, self, public health, safety, convenience, and property values can be established. And you already, in your draft resolution, have numerous conditions of approval to do just that. That standard was articulated in Fusitonic Terminal Corp. versus Planning and Zoning Board of City of Milford, one sixty-eight Connecticut, three oh four, the nineteen-seventy-five case, and also in Judge Robert Fuller's Treatise on Land Use and Practice in Section Twenty-one point nine. So your charge is to determine if the application of proposed use meets the standards set forth in the regulations. And those are eight-point-four-point-five, which is site plan, eight-point-four-point-eight special permit, six-point-ten-point-two coastal site plan, and of course, four-point-twelve-point-six, the waiver of parking. We submit that, based upon plans, reports, and testimony, the applications all conform to your standards. Generally, the comments from the public and one, the one commercial tenant who spoke last month centered on four areas. Parking, noise and dust, construction timeline, and impact to leaseholds. And I'll just address, I'd like to address all of those. As far as parking, as I indicated before, the regulations have codified parking reductions and include the special pro- permit process for a waiver of parking, all in an effort to encourage diminished use of vehicles, increased use of mass transit, and an overall public policy decision by this commission to reduce parking. All of the requirements of the special permit waiver have been met, as articulated in four-point-twelve-point-six. The property is within the proper zone. It's when it's within a half mile of the train station. Your transportation, mobility, and parking department have reviewed and approved the proposal. The ten tandem spaces are provided but are not counted in the overall. And there are other standards that we already spoke about last month that we believe we've fully complied with. Tenants have the right to request a parking space under their lease, but they're not guaranteed under the lease. That I want to just clarify that. As far as noise is concerned, my client is obligated to abide by the noise ordinance of the City of Norwalk and certainly will do so. If he fails to do so, the city has various options available to it to to mandate compliance. Some of the tenants made comments about construction impacts. Since the hearing and in response to those comments, our client has contacted several neighborhood property owners to determine if there are parking spaces on their lot that they would be willing to lease to us during construction. Property owners on Water Street and on Day Street have expressed a willingness to assist us with either leasing of spaces to residents or construction workers or both. Our neighbor to the north, who has a very large on-grade parking lot, was willing to work with us and was willing to talk to us, but he cannot lease any spaces to us since he needs those for his own tenants. We also tried to contact the pastor at the St. Paul's Church next to us, but we have not received any response to our two inquiries to him. We will continue to seek out locations within the neighborhood to provide parking during construction, all to minimize the impact and disruption to residential tenants. As you know, a project such as this will not happen overnight. It'll take at least nine months before site work can begin, if not longer. And this timeframe is necessary for a variety of reasons. The site rear building has to be demolished, so we can create the twenty-plus parking spaces there at the outset. We need to secure zoning and building permits. We need to prepare, um, construction drawings to move forward, and also sign financing will likely need to be secured. Should all the approvals be granted, the distillery at the site rear would first be demolished. But none of this is going to happen right away. I would suspect it's not going to happen for at least nine months to almost a year. As to the building and the Mr. Dumbold's comments relative to his distillery, after the hearing, my client discussed the project again with him, and it was agreed upon that should the project proceed, uh, my client will continue to work with Mr. Dumbold to relocate his business. He then expressed to us he'd no longer had an objection to the project. There's been some concern and commentary about notice to the residential tenants. I just submit to you that the requirements under the regulations have been satisfied. We're not right, we're required to notify a budding property owner who's within a hundred feet of the site, of the submission of the application and of the public hearing, and we did just that. And despite a claim by one of the tenants, Mr. Flores, whose lease happens to expire March thirty-first, two required signs were necessary for this project. Two required signs were erected on October seventh, one on Day Street and one on Raymond Street. I'd like to just address some of the specific questions that some of the tenants had raised that are outside those four general areas. Um, Ms. Kelting, her lease expires on in June of next year. Um, she claimed that there was some bad faith or the tenants were left in the dark. Well, first of all, that's not a zoning standard, but secondly, an owner is free to evaluate whatever development potential he may have for his property. He's not required or obligated to advise tenants of feasibility studies he decides to undertake. Jackhammering or for during construction, as we indicated, the building is going to be slab-on-grade, so that will be minimized. And there very, the, there will be a limited amount of site disturbance. Noise, dust, and inconvenience. Again, we must abide by the noise ordinance and abide by all terms of the tenant's leases, including their right to quiet enjoyment. Tenants have the right to ask for early termination, but again, it's in my client's best interest to minimize disruption to the tenants and and impacts they may have, because it's important for him to have a residential building that's occupied and have that rent roll coming in. Congestion on Day Street. As you know, the city's transportation, mobility, and parking department has signed off not only on the proposal, but also on the special permit parking waiver. There are going to be a limited number of additional vehicle trips, and those vehicle trips have been analyzed by our traffic experts, Hardisty and Hanover, who determined that there's no impact to the roadway system surrounding the property. Access to the, to the lot by emergency vehicles. In August of this year, the Fire Marshal's Office sent an approval of the project, and that approval noted that the proposed clearance provided sufficient, sufficient access under the the building for the fire department to get to the rear of the site. There was a comment that the traffic study was insufficient. Well, I submit to you that the traffic study might all the requirements set forth in the regulations for a complete sufficient traffic study. And in fact, it evaluated a forty-unit development, not a thirty-two-unit development. So therefore, the, the amount of units that are proposed at thirty-two will certainly be easily accommodated by the roadway system. Ms. Vandell, whose lease expires in September of next year, she shared many of the same concerns as Ms. Kettling, which we've already answered. She didn't claim, though, that perhaps this will open a Pandora's box and what happens with changes. Well, as you know, with the special permit application, an applicant is required to return to you with any changes to that are from the approved special permit. And you have the opportunity to say, those changes are minor, you can proceed. Those changes are more minor than, more, more than minor, but less than major, so you may need another public hearing. Or you may determine that the changes require both a new application and a new public hearing. So there is continuing review by this commission for future changes. There seems to be a belief that we misrepresented the number of spaces that are necessary. And I submit to you that the regulations permit spaces per unit. They're not specific to the number of bedrooms in a unit. So the parking calculations we provided are fully compliant with the requirements. Uh, Mr. Flores, his lease expires on March thirty-first of next year. He also raised comments about dust, lack of notice, and I believe I've answered those. Ms. Couch, her lease expires February twenty-eighth of next year. She also shared many of the same comments on parking, which I believe I've explained in detail. And lastly, Mr. Rechenbach, his lease expires December thirty-first of this year, who also raised concerns about parking and noise, which, again, I believe we've answered. In conclusion, we believe the project meets all of the standards for special permit, site plan, coastal site plan, and the specific additional requirements for the waiver of parking. The special permit standards are set forth in eight dash four, eight-point-four-point-B, and your staff has identified our compliance with all of those in the memorandum to you. We also believe that in site plan, coastal site plan application standards of review have all been met. And for these reasons, we believe the project is fully compliant with your regulations, and we ask that you approve the application as as presented. That concludes our presentation, and I look forward to your deliberation and action this evening.
Thank you, Attorney Sachi. Are there any questions for Attorney Sachi?
Hi, Chapin, if I might just ask a question or two?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Sachi, for your review. It's difficult sometimes as commissioners here because we, or at least I do have, you know, human feelings for people that come to these public hearings and concerns for their, you know, City of Norwalk residents' well-being. Um, and I just want to kind of confirm, or if you can share, what is going to happen to the Sono fourteen-twenty distillery? Is, is that something that you can share with us?
The only thing, um, Commissioner, that I can share is that should this project be approved and proceed, my client will work with Mr. Dumbold to relocate him to another location and preferably in Norwalk. That was how we left it with Mr. Dumbold, and he seemed satisfied with that.
He is. Okay. Thank you. And then, if this project does go forward, what arrangements is your client making for parking for the existing tenants of the Nineteen Day Street?
Again, as I had mentioned, we have been in contact with at least one property owner on Water Street that can accommodate parking for either tenants or construction workers or both during construction. Uh, there is another tenant at the end of Day Street that I've spoken to, excuse me, another property owner uh, further south on Day Street, who's expressed a willingness to provide us with parking there. We have at least two other locations that we are speaking to the property owners. So I think there'll be sufficient additional spaces available during construction to accommodate the tenants' needs. And I think that's been a, those are conditions of approval that have been set forth in the resolution that we have to use our best efforts to make sure that we provide adequate spaces for the tenants during construction.
Will the tenants have to lease those spaces?
It would not be the tenants leasing the spaces, no.
Would the cost be passed down to the tenants in any way?
I don't believe it would. Right now, the tenants, the spaces that the tenants have, they don't pay for the spaces under their leases. So I would imagine that that would not be a cost we would pass to the tenants.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, Attorney Sachi, thank you. Are there, you, you didn't articulate any numbers, but that whole parking lot will be a work site in my estimation. So in the conversations you've had with other landlords along Day Street, which is kind of a long street, do you have fifty-six spaces? Or do you think you'll have fifty-six spaces for the tenants?
Well, we're not going to be displacing fifty-six spaces from the, at the outset. And keep in mind, if in fact this moves forward, once the distillery building is removed, there's approximately twenty-five spaces that would automatically be created back there, large measure for construction workers and materials. But we'll have to, we have to make sure that we can maintain the needs of the tenants and address their concerns and meet our obligations under the lease. The best we can do is is try to accommodate as, try to find as many spaces as we can to make sure that we don't displace the tenants and keep them, um, keep their, the impact to them minimized. But as far as a specific number, we don't know how many spaces on a day-to-day basis we may need. We'll just try to find as many as possible so that the tenants are, their impacts are minimized. One day, perhaps one week, it's five spaces, perhaps during heavy construction, it may be fifteen. I can't specifically address that, and I don't think it's appropriate to tie a specific number of spaces to an approval or a condition, because that may fluctuate. But we will use our best efforts to continue to find spaces so that it minimizes tenant impact.
Thank you.
Um, I have a question. This may be for Michelle, but I got confused on the parking. Does the, do the seven or eight spaces that we're asking for in the special permit include the tandem spaces or not in in the parking count of necessary spaces?
They do not count towards the parking calculation.
So technically speaking, if there were five spaces instead of ten tandem spaces, they would only be two or three spaces short. Is that correct?
Essentially, yes.
Okay, thank you. I understand it now. Thanks.
Go ahead, Harvey.
Um, okay, given the construction is happening directly, uh, like on Day Street, where the entrance to the parking lot is, is there actually going to be continuous access to the parking lot throughout the course of the building's construction?
I can say there will be continuous access with a caveat that perhaps there may need to be a closure when a large trucker or materials come in, but we have to maintain access for the tenants. They have to be able to get in and out of the building.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions for Attorney Sachi? All right. Is there a motion for this application? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I forgot to close the public hearing, but it is, it is now closed. Um, can, uh, Michelle, do you mind pulling up the resolution for us to review?
Can you all see that?
Yes.
So I just want to know, based on staff conversations, I know you guys got the version with these highlighted additional um, conditions, but after that, um, staff added, um, similar to what you guys had did at one away Water Street, that's kind of more of a generalized, uh, to, to note the displacement of the distiller that the commission, just to make you guys feel more comfortable that the applicant is working on it, but also the commission recognizes that, um, a viable business on-site is being displaced, and we want to support business and things like that. So, um, we just added that, uh, condition.
Um, Michelle, I think that those businesses are indeed important to the City of Norwalk. I think it's hyperbolic, uh, hyperbolic to refer to them as vital. Um, I don't want to minimize their importance, but I also don't want to overstate it. We could say important, we can say very important.
Yeah, important is good, I think. But you make a good point, though. You know, and the story is not idle.
Sure.
I, um, I don't want to quibble about the adjective in the, in the, um, in the document, but I do want to share that, in my opinion, that it, that is a vital business for downtown Norwalk and the community and the distillery, and they've played multiple roles in the community over time and continue to bring people to the area. Um, and I am, I am concerned about the displacement of that business. I'm concerned about turning a property where people are living into a construction site. I would feel more comfortable if they started construction after all leases had, you know, ended, if they notified everybody that their leases would be ended within, you know, at, when their leases are up or something, and then did the construction. And I'm also not comfortable with granting the waiver of the seven or eight parking spaces. I think we've already reduced the parking spaces for train station and affordable housing. And while we want to do things to promote walkability and reduce car dependence, we I, I, I don't think that, um, I, I don't think that the strategy of just cutting and cutting and cutting parking spaces, let alone considering removing all parking requirements in the downtown area, which I think was referenced as a prior sort of philosophical position, is wise. At this point, I recently spoke with a property manager of one of these buildings that basically said they came in and saw the number of parking spaces and said, this isn't going to work. This is not going to work. The people who actually operate these buildings know that they're needed. Um, and we're starting to see people overparked in the surrounding communities. So for that, um, reason, I'm not comfortable with further allowing a waiver.
I wasn't going to bring this up until after we had voted. But, um, uh, it's, it's clear to me, um, that, uh, the waiver, um, uh, that's tied to the SMI is, um, really disproportionate, uh, to the value. Um, and I would suggest uh, that we talk about that separately. It doesn't belong in this conversation. Uh, but to reduce, uh, uh, parking because of what's happening in just, uh, two or three apartments um, really doesn't, uh, make sense to me. Any more sense, frankly, than it made, and I was not involved in this. Uh, giving, um, uh, the Pearl, uh, uh, additional height or additional volume because they put in a waterfall. Um, and then, by the way, chose not to maintain that waterfall. Uh, but that's a, a separate issue, but I would like to see us, um, when we have the time, uh, to discuss that. Uh, because it really just doesn't feel, uh, proportionate and comfortable to me. Um, I have, um, I, I completely sympathize with, um, the, the feelings of the tenants uh, in this matter. But frankly, as a matter of law, we can't make our decision on that basis. That has no um, substantive place in, um, uh, planning and zoning decision-making. Um, and I would hope that, uh, other commissioners would agree and, um, make decision strictly on the basis of, uh, what rules, regulation, and law, uh, permit.
Thank you both for the comments. Um, are there any other items for discussion or modifications to this resolution? Uh, Richard, if you're talking, you're muted.
Still muted. Okay. Every time I clicked on it, it moved. Um, I have a question for Michelle, I believe. What would the effect be on this application if the parking waiver wasn't granted?
Then the application wouldn't comply with the parking requirement. So they would, I mean, I guess you guys have to make a decision within the, I believe, the thirty-five days. So the applicant would have to go back to the drawing board, or you guys would have to deny it because it wouldn't comply with the zoning, just as the site plan review and CAM.
You know, I, I listened to this entire application, and I'm, I guess I'm just not understanding, um, the reason why we're considering a waiver. I don't know. I, I absolutely agreed with that part of what Anna had to say. But I don't know what, what that means to the applicant, whether they can come in and ask for less units or, or what. But I just have, I've had a, a difficulty with our change in the regulations to the parking to start with. Um, and I just, uh, I, I'm having trouble uh, understanding why I should go along with a waiver on the parking.
Yeah, I feel like it's not bringing anything particularly special or needed. It, it, it it's more units, thirty-two more units, three of them are at sixty percent, but it's not a particularly I don't know. I feel like to, sort of to Richard's point, to waive the requirement, would be for a reason. There's something special about this project, about this building that's sorely needed, or that's going to be gorgeous, or is going to bring a particular business here, support something, something, and if anything, it's taking a business away. And it's disturbing the, the neighborhood.
I would personally be more comfortable I would personally be more comfortable if we added if we took those ten spaces and indicated that they must use at least five of those spaces to meet their parking requirement. In which case the waiver they're asking for, I believe, is only two spaces. Is that, am I right about that?
Do you mind clarifying what what you mean in in that request?
The 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 two, the five double spaces are not being counted. I'm saying, let us insist that at least five of those ten be used for parking. Thus, reducing the number of spaces they're asking for as a waiver.
So I I maybe I'm understanding this differently, that the the ten tandem spaces are actually twenty spaces in that the the ten that are adjacent to the parking aisle are being counted as spaces towards that count of eighty eight. And then there's an additional ten spaces on the other side of it that are not being counted towards that eighty eight and
That's not my understanding. Michelle, can you clarify?
Chip Chipin's correct, so and I, it's between the the spaces are there and could be parked in, they don't count towards the parking requirement because they don't meet the legal back out in access. So they could have tandem spaces, but they don't count towards the parking requirement.
So Michelle, in reality, there's twenty places to park cars and they count as ten spaces, but there are twenty spaces to park cars. So there's nothing, the the spaces are there and they count as ten.
Correct.
Yes. And so the waiver of eight is basically asking us to look at eight of those tandem spaces that are that you can't back out of into a parking aisle and count those as valid parking spaces. Plus, they have two more, but they're not asking for a waiver on. Does that make sense? I wish I could draw.
Yeah.
Michelle, is it possible to maybe bring up the site plan at this point? Is that appropriate?
Sure.
Thank you. I I think that might help to have that visual reference here, just to make sure we're looking at this correctly.
Perpendicular one.
This is perfect. So the in the where it says tandem spots, it's just counting that that one row as the ten tandem and that ten doesn't count towards the parking count of eighty eight. And so the waiver one way to look at it is that the waiver of eight spaces is saying that is asking us to allow them to count eight of those ten tandem spots towards their parking minimum. And then they have an additional two to the right of Michelle's cursor that they're also providing. So that's one way to see this. And that's how I'd seen this before was this waiver of eight was more about being able to count these tandem spots towards their required parking.
But that clarifies it for me.
Sure. Someone making the point, though, that the tandem spots only work if it's the same household. You know, you and there being the they're asking us to count some of the tandem spot for a separate unit as parking for separate units, right?
I'm not sure. Michelle, do you remember the number of units total in this?
Thirty two units total they're proposing typically. Yes, like a two bedroom or a three bedroom essentially would get assigned to, that would make the most sense. That that's how usually would work. But again, on a granular level zoning doesn't really get involved in what exact spaces are being leased to which bedrooms.
Essentially, we have a policy that tandem spaces, the the back half of them don't count as parking because you can't pull up. And they're saying, can we count the parking spaces that don't count as parking as parking?
Right, that's one way to look at it. Yes. Yep.
Oh, thank you. I think this question should be directed to Michelle. Did we ever consider two things? Asking the applicant to make the building smaller instead of thirty two units, maybe they cut off, you know, four units or something like that. And did we ever consider much as I want as green a parking lot as possible? Would we give them variance, let's just say, to not have maybe two of those little tree islands on the north side of the parking lot. So making it all parking and I'm not sure if the little tree drawings are wide enough to be parking spaces, but would that be a consideration to get a little bit more parking out of this?
We didn't ask the applicant on our initial review, they proposed forty units and then they are, they have bumped it down to thirty two to make things like parking work better. So they did do a unit reduction, but we're still requesting that eight space relief. We had not talked to the applicant about variances. They, I think it would probably would require a handful because they also have to comply with impervious area. So I I don't think a variance would be the best path for them, since there's really not a hardship.
So this project proposed at forty doesn't comply with our regulations and they reduced it to thirty two. And it still doesn't comply with our regulations.
But that was for the traffic, not for the parking study, right? The forty units, it was the traffic study that was done based on forty units, not the parking.
No, I mean, Michelle had said that originally they they were gonna do forty units and it didn't work. You know, parking wise, and they brought it down to thirty two. It still doesn't work parking wise. And if you were to get rid of some of the islands to make it work parking wise, it wouldn't work impervious wise because this project doesn't doesn't work on this parcel. Doesn't meet our requirements.
That's that's not accurate.
The whole thing impervious, permeable pavers or something, but yeah, I'm
I heard Steve chiming in. Steve, do you want to go?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's not actually an accurate statement to say it doesn't comply because the special permit gives you the ability to grant the reduced parking. It's not, you know, you could say variants would valid. So I'm, I don't think that's a correct statement. I think there, you know, there's identified need for housing in the city and the nation, as we all know. This is an area that the city has emphasized where growth is appropriate based on its location to the train station. It's unfortunate that there's a business being displaced in the process, but that's beyond the control of the commission because there's no guarantee that there they would meet lease terms on a new lease. He might say he wants too much rent in the future and he may move out. Or he could say, I I don't want that building there anyway and do something different in the back. So I don't think he can get bogged down into that kind of minutia with this. I think you have to weigh the application on its merits. I would say, Michelle, if you could reiterate the total number of units on site and then the total number of parking spaces that will be available, that kind of gives a big picture of how many spaces per unit that they're actually seeking. And you could do that, including the tandem and exclusive.
Let me bring up to Steve's point the parking calculation. Can you all see that?
Yep.
Yeah.
So here it shows there's a total of eighty eight units on site. And then there's eighty eight spaces provided. But this is achieved through the parking reliefs that we spoke about, the train station and the workforce housing. And then it adds the ten tandem spaces that leaves you at ninety eight spaces on site.
Sorry, Michelle, that's a little confusing. It's eighty eight only because it's close to the train station, or if we actually counted all the little spots, is it eighty eight?
There's eighty eight physical spaces that count towards zoning. Plus, you can, if you plus the ten tandem, so there are technically ninety eight spaces on the site. They're allowed to reduce that down to the eighty eight through a couple of the outlets in the zoning regulation.
Got it. Thank you, Steve.
But I think the other issue is that the original units were parked at one point three. So if they're parked at one point three, that really doesn't provide a space per each unit.
I think what Michelle indicated, there were eighty eight spaces, eighty eight units plus the ten tandem. So it's still over one per unit.
Well, I think it is one per unit.
I'm looking at this chart. It looks like it's one per unit for every single unit in both buildings. And I thought the original building was staying one point three per unit.
It is, yes.
So why does it say one space? Like on that sixth or seventh row down? Showing twenty one units, required twenty one spaces, thirty six units, required thirty six spaces. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, I see that. It shouldn't, I I I did the full math at one point. I don't have the notes with me. Because it was nuanced between the reliefs. But yeah, the the existing is still parked at one point three because yeah, they're not, I mean, they're getting the the train station relief applied to that calculation, but they aren't applying the one to one because they're at eighty percent state meter income.
Yeah, I think, Michelle, what I think we're getting at is that the one point three spaces per unit were the initial approval, if it wasn't even if it wasn't more at that time. But the waivers they're seeking are for the new parking that's required as part of the new development.
Well, the one point three comes out to seventy two point eight spaces required for the fifty six units. So I'm not understanding the math.
Steve, do we have to look at it as the old building and the new building, or can we just look at it as the old building without the old parking requirements? So we look at the new building and the old building with the same parking requirements, the new parking requirements.
I think I just misspoke, but I think that's what's being proposed because that's that's the way the math works, eighty eight spaces, eighty eight units.
Right.
At least one space for every unit, right?
Eighty eight of each, eighty eight units, eighty eight parking spaces.
Okay.
The first building is supposed to still be one point three, right?
It's not.
It's not.
That was, that's what it was approved as, but they're seeking to use the special permit to get it down to one per unit.
Okay.
So so people, when they move in, you know, when they move into the new building and renew leases to the old building would realize they only get one parking place. So if they can't deal with one parking place, they need to find another.
I think they only get one parking place now, but the but the parking the number of spaces provided to meet the needs of that building currently are one point three.
If they get one point three, that means some of them are getting two.
It may be. That might be on a first come, first served basis for the residual space. So you're probably assigned a space, you're guaranteed a space. And then if there's an extra space for, if you have a second car, it's available. If not, then you need to come up with an alternate place to park.
Right. Or just have one car. And that's why this, the train station, the proximity of the space, the train station is important. Right?
If you work along the train line.
If you work along the train line or but there is also, it's also planned to be a transit hub altogether, isn't it, Tammy? You know, that so it's not just the train line, there'll also be a bus hub.
You're able to take the bus. It's up to the landlord to decide if he wants to let the people that already live in the fifty six unit building, if some of them have two parking spaces, that would mean that not everybody in the new building gets a parking space, but that's up to the landlord, I guess. That's not for us to determine. That's his marketing of his place, how much he can charge for the units.
But if we approve it, we're approving at least one space for every apartment.
I don't think we are doing, we're not, because let's just hypothetically say ten units of the fifty six now already have two cars. Is the landlord going to say to them, you have to get rid of one of your cars so that I can give guarantee a spot to everybody in my new building?
Not necessarily get rid of.
They could say, you only get one spot with this with this apartment when we renew the lease. We used to give two spots, but now we only, there's only one.
Yep, I lived in places with that where it was one spot was available as a part of your lease. If you'd like a second spot, there was a waitlist and, you know, maybe you could have the opportunity to to rent that spot. But otherwise, you had to go find somewhere else to park if if you had more than one vehicle.
Right. And we don't know what the leases say, so that is landlord's problem.
Yep, unfortunately.
Right. He also has two, he or she has two or three bedroom units that have one parking space. So it's his problem to rent it.
Yep. And fortunately, we don't have to opine on on lease conditions.
Right.
Thank goodness.
Go ahead. We know what definitive answer on the, if there's eighty eight spaces available and eighty eight required, why are we considering a waiver? Now I'm totally confused.
So there are ninety eight physical spaces because of the ten tandem spaces that can't be counted as part of the zoning regs.
But we are counting them.
Well, through the waiver, right, we are able to count eight of them as meeting the regulations. So that is what they're requesting is that we waive eight of the spaces, even though they are physically providing ten spaces. Are there any other changes anyone would like to make to the resolution? Is there any other discussion we'd like to have on this resolution?
The only thing I would say well, I guess, hey, what I'm going to say is that I think we should keep in mind the fact that there is a real housing crisis in Norwalk and, you know, in Fairfield County in general. And the fact that this is close to a transportation hub or what will be even a more robust transportation hub than it already is. So that's something I think it's important for us to keep in mind.
Similarly, as it relates to the concerns around construction, I I worry about requiring a landlord to have a vacant building in order to do construction because that means that they would have to not have the fifty something, fifty six current units occupied, right? And that creates even more of a deficit in housing during that construction period. So just wanted to all that out as well. Given that we've got changes. Oh, go ahead, Michelle.
Sorry, I just wanted to I quickly did the math with the parking and I could walk you guys through it. I don't know if I don't want to confuse people more on the parking or if you guys are good, but I was jotting down the numbers. But up up to you guys.
Yes, go ahead, Michelle.
Sure. Okay. So there's fifty six existing units, thirty two proposed. The fifty six units are parked at one point three, so that requires seventy three parking spaces. The thirty two units are parked one to one. The thirty-two units are parked one-to-one for the workforce housing, so that's thirty-two parking spaces required. Seventy-three plus thirty-two is one oh five required. Ten percent reduction for the train station subtracts ten point five from that number, which gives you, I think I rounded up, so that would be ninety-five required overall. So they have to, they're required for ninety-five spaces, but they only have eighty-eight provided, which led them to get a special permit for the seven spaces that they don't have. And then we got to eight because they are having ground floor office, so that made them have an additional space required because they're putting that leasing office on the ground floor. So that's why they need the special permit for eight spaces. And that doesn't count the tandem at all in the calculations. So they, they're providing the eighty-eight spaces plus the tandem.
Michelle, why does the ten percent reduction apply to all one hundred and five and not just to the new thirty-two?
That's how, I mean, staff level, we applied it because it was.
So they're not adding one hundred and five?
I think that's how it's written, right? It's about the property. It's not necessarily about the.
The proposal, yeah, it applies to the property total required parking, so they can apply it when they're proposing this new construction.
They could have a large building, add a few units near the train station and get ten percent reduction on the current entire deal. Okay, thank you.
That's my understanding at least.
Mr. Chairman, can I muck up the conversation a little more, if you don't mind?
Briefly, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I think to Mr. Schulman's point, and I didn't think of this until now, I think another, I don't know if they could have done this based on the leases, but I think they could have gone back and revised the workforce housing program to get all the workforce units at sixty percent SMI and then gotten down to one space per unit, and it might have got to the same point in time.
Am I, I, I could be misremembering this, maybe this was my own internal thought process, but in, in such a circumstance, I, I worry about that being a negative for anyone who's currently at the eighty percent SMI in one of those five or so units in the building that would then no longer qualify and have to go find something else because they don't qualify at the sixty percent threshold, we say.
I, 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 I wasn't suggesting that, I'm just saying that, yeah, I think they could have done that to meet the. And then the, then the parking ratio would have lined up, I would say almost without the special permit piece. So I think this is just a way that, to your point, preserves that affordability and protects those existing tenants while also getting them the additional units they need to make the development financially cheaper.
Sure. Thank you, Steve. Is there any other discussion on this resolution? All right, I think there was a modification since the motion. Galen, do you, are you comfortable with these changes?
Yes, I am.
Great, Harvey, are you also comfortable as you seconded? Okay, great. I think we can bring this to a vote. Michelle, do you mind doing a roll call for this one?
Sure.
Thank you.
Wait, did we make any subsequent changes to the document since this discussion started?
The only change was the word.
Yeah, took out vital to important on the brewery. Okay, that was it, right?
Yes.
Right, don't have it up. Okay, thank you.
Of course.
All right, I will start at the bottom of my screen. I don't think anybody's off camera, but Mr. Williams?
abstain.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Sebastian?
No.
Mr. Oina?
No.
Ms. Lang Dallas?
I don't love this project, but I'm not going to vote against it, so I guess that's a yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Lenkovsky?
reluctantly, yes.
And Mr. Bryce?
Thank you, Mr. Jones as well.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Apologies. Mr. Bryce?
Yes. I think that's everyone. And the motion carries, that's five yeses, two nos, one abstention. Thank you, Attorney Sachi, for your presentation. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. Lou, I've noted down the item you want us to come back to as well, so hopefully we can come back to that, maybe not tonight, but soon.
Thank you very much tonight for all of your efforts and for your thoughtful deliberation.
Thank you. All right, our next application is a public hearing. It is twenty twenty-five dash five-nine regulation change, RMS Real Estate Group LLC zoning regulation text amendment to Article Seven sign standards to create a corner sign, sign type, and permit corner signs within the CD three C and CD four zones, public hearing, report and recommended action. I see there's members from the public here tonight. We will start with a presentation from the applicant. Commissioners will then ask questions, and then we will open it up to public comment. At that point, the applicant will then be able to respond to the public comment, and then we'll move to deliberations. With that, Attorney Sachi, are you representing this text amendment?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Again, for the record, my name is Liz Sachi, a partner at Carmody, Torrance, Sandec, and Hennessy, ten fifty-five Washington Boulevard in Stamford. With me tonight is Robert Dubry. He is the Director of Marketing for RMS Real Estate Group, which is the applicant before you on this proposed text amendment. Just by way of background, the application was filed on July twenty-fourth of this year. No notice to neighbors within a hundred feet is required since there is no site plan or a special permit application accompanying the text amendment. The applicant is RMS Real Estate Group LLC, which is the owner developer of three seventy West Avenue. That proposed, that mixed-use development is nearing completion. And as you will recall from your approval back in twenty twenty-three, it consists of two hundred four apartments, twenty of which were affordable, first-floor restaurant, onsite amenities, rooftop solar, and a parking garage with approximately two hundred and sixty spaces. The proposal before you, as I mentioned, is a text amendment to basically replace corner signs back into the zoning code, which existed prior to the zoning code rewrite in twenty twenty-three and adopted in twenty twenty-four. Rob, would you be kind enough to screen share some examples of the existing signs that, corner signs, if you could? There we go. Okay. Prior to the zoning rewrite, the corner sign regulation existed in the code, and it was, it related to a proposed signage at five thirty-five Connecticut Avenue. That signage I remember distinctly because I worked on the corner sign definition back about eighteen years ago. So corner signs exist here at five thirty-five Connecticut Avenue, that's an office building right next to PetSmart and across from the Kohl's parking lot. There are also corner signs at Merritt View next to the Merritt Parkway, Dado on Main Ave, Fact Set on Main Ave, and directly across, that's Merritt View right next to the Merritt Parkway, and also across from the property at the waypoint. These corner signs existed under the old regulations. When the new regulations became effective, corner signs were eliminated. And we would like to reintroduce them into the regulations with the signage package that we have proposed and with the language that, if Rob, you could share the language, that we've submitted as part of the application. Generally, we would define a corner sign as a sign placed horizontally or vertically at or near the roof line containing form, that, for a structure that contains four or more stories, identifying the name of the building to which it's attached, or in the alternative, name of corporate tenant, there could be no more than two corner signs, and they would be installed at a measurement of one square foot of signage per linear foot of building frontage upon which the sign is to be installed. And it would be in lieu of any other signs except for structures that have, that are four or more stories that have commercial on the first floor, they could install street-level commercial signage. Corner signs would have to comply with your elimination requirements. And then we would also include in the zoning regulation a new table or a chart or graphic that depicts what a corner sign is, just like you have in the code today. The two zones that the corner sign would be applicable would be the CD four and the CD three C. And we've indicated four stories or more because that's the minimum height in some of those zones. So it's really, I think, very straightforward. Corner signs existed before, they're no longer allowed in the code right now, and the result of removing them from the code made those images that you saw just previously all legally non-conforming signs. So this application does two things. It make, would make those signs conforming and would also allow for structures that are four or more stories to have the opportunity to select to install a corner sign if they so, those, if they so chose. But then they would also be limited on the other type of signage that they could put on the building. We think this is a reasonable application. We think it's appropriate. And if Robbie could show a video, a video, an image of what the sign is that we're contemplating, that would be, that's Main West Avenue. That would be the type of corner sign we would contemplate on Main, on the West Avenue building. Small sign up vertically, up at the, up right near the ridge, the roof line, limited in size, illumination, illumination would comply with the regulations. And then the only other signage on the West Avenue project would be along the street front where there's a retail tenant. It's important for us, this type of signage, because not only does this building represent a gateway building to West Avenue, it also serves, serves as wayfinding, we believe, to those who are traveling on ninety-five or those who are traveling on Route seven. They can see the sign from a distance and realize that's where the building is, that building is on West Avenue, and provides visibility for the building, directional information for the building and for the area. Think it's a good wayfinding opportunity, a good signpost, good guidepost for individuals traveling to the site. And again, I think one of the other benefits is it makes these other corner signs that existed, which are now non-conforming, it brings them, makes them conforming to the regulations. That's really what we, we propose to you. Staff has shared some comments, two comments that we think are inappropriate. One is to limit the letter height from three, four feet as we, we would suggest to three feet. I think the, the higher the building, the further away you come, you are from it, a three-foot letter height makes it now start to not be visible, and then it just becomes clutter on the building. I think four foot is appropriate, especially in light of the fact that there would only be two corner signs allowed on any four-story building or taller. And I, I don't think that a special permit application is necessary for a corner sign on a structure. There won't be many of them. And a special permit application with its standards doesn't really apply and is, it, it's just an odd mix of application requirement for signage when you don't require special permits for other signage, not to mention the fact it would be a mandatory public hearing. I don't think that's necessary if a sign is suggested, if signage regulations are met by the plans that are submitted, and it meets all the requirements of the corner sign as proposed. I don't think a special permit is something that's appropriate for this type of, it's not even a use, it's just signage. We don't have any other questions. We just wanted to bring this to your attention. I hope that you think this is an appropriate addition to the regulations. We certainly believe it's consistent with other signage in the area. You will not find a lot of corner signs popping up. They haven't been popping up since the corner sign regulation was first enacted some eighteen years ago or so. So we hope that you find the, the value and the wisdom in this type of signage and this application gets approved. You have any questions for me or for Mr. Dubry? We're happy to answer them.
I actually have a question for Steve. And that is, why were corner signs eliminated in the new regulations?
Excellent question. I wish I had an answer for you. I don't, just don't think that when the consultant was working on putting the documents together, that that they felt from a unit, unification of design perspective, that those kinds of signs were appropriate. Staff, the agnostic on them, as far as I can tell, we don't have a big yes or no. I don't think they're a problem. I don't have any issue with Attorney Sachi's request to have slightly larger letter size. You know, special permit, site plan, I'll leave that up to you if you feel it's appropriate or the taste of those in your liking, but I'll leave that, that piece up.
I think Steve trailed off there, but I think that was the end of his, his comment. Lou, did that answer your question?
Yeah, it did.
Okay, great. Harvey, go ahead.
For either Steve or Michelle, did, is there either anything in the ordinance or did you all consider limitations on the timing of illumination of these signs?
I don't believe staff has contemplated timing of lighting. I think I know the regulations, sign regulations in general are steering away from illuminated, at least inside illumination.
This is a slightly, I, I shouldn't say, I'm not a sign expert, but from what I understand, the type of illumination is less brilliant, if that's the proper way of describing it. It's more muted, given the, the technology that they use and whatever the regulations require in terms of illumination, we would have to abide by, whether it's this sign or any other. I don't know if that's helpful, but I, it's not, it's not external, there's not a light shining on the sign, it's, I think it's, it's more subdued than other signers that you may see in town right now.
I think the term you're thinking about is backlit.
Are there other? Oh, go ahead, Harvey.
It looks like staff's concerns about the, the need for special permit is primarily about the illumination and its impact on neighbors. Did you consider just having the special permit be for illuminated signs and permitting other corner signs?
No, that, I mean, for that kind of sign, I've never, I mean, I don't think it would be practical for them to not illuminate it.
Thank you.
Especially as our buildings are getting taller and they're on the top floor, it would be hard for somebody to see it from the street down below.
This would be in the CD four and CD three.
Three C. So it would be generally for structures that are West Avenue, Connecticut Avenue, Main Ave, Westport Avenue, your main corridors. The other thing that's odd about special permit, at least in my estimation, is the special permit application standards don't, aren't relevant to signage, you know, are there utilities on the site? The various standards that we just talked about with the last application. Existing land use in the area, proximity to community facilities, density and use of buildings, traffic impacts, availability and compatibility of utilities, the existing standards and special permits just don't mesh with a sign. So I, I think if, I think the staff does an excellent job at determining whether or not a sign is compliant with the regulations and, and we'd have to provide information on illumination standards. I think they would be more than adequately able to determine whether or not a sign is compliant or not, not have to come to you with a special permit, set it down for a public hearing. And what are the standards then that we're, we're dealing with?
Another, another, I apologize for just thinking of now, I think maybe to a couple of commissioners' points is in terms of impacts on residential areas, where, where does the building face? So if it's facing like Main Ave, that's probably not that big of a deal because you're not, not going to impact anybody at that point or but much less likely to impact anybody, but if you are putting a residential zone, then you, you know, the opportunity to have a glow or flare or impact on those properties probably increase, so you could address that through allowing it with limitations or keep it as a special permit to look at each one of those. I think if you're looking for an ease of, ease of use by the applicant, you would consider some limitations to that, or if you have major concerns, then you would keep it as a special permit.
I don't have major concerns in this zone. I'm thinking the Sono collection also, kind of New Van cell and Rock Hospital. I'm sure it wouldn't be dissimilar to those two examples.
Are there other questions for Attorney Sachi before we open it up for public comment? All right. Thank you, Attorney Sachi. So now we will turn it to public comment. If you wish to speak, you now have one opportunity to speak. We do not limit the time in which, oh, sorry, Attorney Sachi, do you have something before we start? Oh.
Sorry.
Okay. So you have one opportunity to speak. There is no time limit on how long you speak, but we do ask you to both be concise and polite. This is not a dialogue. The applicant will have a chance to respond after all the comments. This is not a dialogue. The applicant will have a chance to respond after all the comments are heard. And we ask that you begin with your full name and your address. Michelle, do you mind announcing to folks how they can participate?
Sure. If you're logged on tonight and would like to make a public comment on this item, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Or if you're dialed in on a phone, press star nine. Don't see anybody yet.
All right. If you'd like to participate, please raise your hand. Otherwise, I'll call it in a minute and we'll go back. All right, seems like we have no takers tonight. So we'll close the public comment portion. Attorney Sachi, do you have any closing remarks or additional remarks you'd like to make?
No, none at this time. Do you have any questions for me or for Mr. Dubry? We're happy to answer them. If not, we'll forward to your deliberation and hopefully your action tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion for this application?
Move.
All right, Richard moved. Looks like Lou seconded. Can we pull up a resolution? Thanks, Michelle. Oh, what'd you say?
No, I said sorry to make you dizzy. I was trying to find the start of the resolution itself, which I believe there's two for the text amendment and then.
Sure. Right, this is the resolution to approve as is, and then I think the next one is to approve with staff modifications. I guess we weren't clear in the motion. Richard, do you have a, which one were you motioning for the staff modifications?
I think I'm interested in the one that does not require a public hearing.
Okay, so I think that's one of the decisions we need to make is whether or not it requires a a public hearing. And then the second is on the lighting, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe the third is on the letter height. Those are the three. Three we need. So, Richard, since you made the motion, do you have a strong feeling on those three items? He said not a public hearing, so by rights.
Public hearing.
Do you have a preference? Oh, go ahead.
I was just, I agree with Richard.
Okay. Great. Richard, do you have a strong opinion on the letter height, three feet versus four?
No. I don't have any feeling about that. I guess it I guess the bigger the building, the larger the sign should be, I suppose. I like that Cornish sign. I think it 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 really looks really improves the look of the building as opposed to some of the other things I've seen.
Okay. Do you have a strong opinion on the backlighting? I think staff had provided two samples of like possible illumination at the top. Michelle, do you mind scrolling up to the top of the memo where it's the internal versus backlit?
I think the one on the left looks nice. The one on the right is a little bright, but I I really have no opinion on that.
Do we? I'm sorry, Chapin, as a commission, do we have to decide or can we let the applicant decide on the backlit or illuminated?
I thought we have to decide, although I I saw that in the regulations, there is a section that talks about backlit illumination. Michelle or Steve, do you do you know that offhand? Like, is this a specific thing we need to decide on tonight?
Yeah, I think what they're proposing is outside of what we allow elsewhere. That's why staff is recommending going not having that eternal illumination, because I think tends to lead to more flare and my own aesthetic opinion for.
Steve, I didn't, I wasn't able to hear what you said.
Me neither.
Sorry. I'm on the Rhode Island border, but who knows what you're gonna hear.
He prefers the backlit.
Yes.
I I think there's a trick of the presentation here, which is that the internally illuminated is actually substantially brighter, is my guess, but the PDF is watching them out to be equal brightness. So I guess.
Right. Lit is softer as opposed to internal lit versus, which isn't a choice, if you had, say, a light below shining on the letters. Which that's not a choice. But that would be your other type of lighting. This is a more modern, if you will. Yeah.
I also lean towards the the backlit personally, but.
Likewise.
I agree.
Yes.
Okay. I'm hearing strong support for that. Is there any other discussion on the lighting for this sign before we go to letter height? All right. Are there any strong feelings on the letter height as a four-foot max versus a three-foot max letter height? Say it again, Galen.
And apparently not.
Apparently not. I'm happy to defer to staff, which Steve had indicated being okay with the four-foot height, which the applicant had also requested. All right, and then the third piece is the special permit versus by right.
I think it should be.
I'm I'm a little bit concerned where one of these signs may potentially interfere with residents. And it it seems to me if we and and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we make it a a site plan review, we still leave open the option for a public hearing. Without having to go through all the rigmarole of a special permit.
Yeah, another another option is to add a limitation that the sign cannot face a residential zone.
Well, language has to be a little clearer than that. Because it could face a residential zone, but you know, still be a quarter a mile away. I I I think if it's adjacent near or adjacent to a residential zone. We we might want, we might want to take a closer look at it. Is the
Yeah, perhaps, perhaps you didn't. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, the building that the applicant is asking about is the new building where the old YMCA was, right? That is not a residential zone, but that building faces other apartment buildings, which are residential in that zone. So I don't think putting residential zone is the right language. It's more is it going to interfere with somebody getting a good night's sleep because there's a big backlit sign or a neon sign blaring into the window across the street? And I'm not, that's not the best articulation, but I think you got what I mean.
That's a good point, Tammy.
Should we approach this like we do other lighting concerns where it's about book candles and like distance over property lines? Is there an approach we can take there?
I'm not sure I know what you're saying, Chapin.
So, for example, in in parking lots, right, we we require a certain amount of lighting within the parking aisles and parking spaces. But we have a requirement that like the the light can't bleed over into a neighboring property, for example. I unfortunately am not a lighting expert, so I'm not sure if that translates nicely to the backlighting of such a sign. And if we could address, I I think the concern that Lou raised before about having it shining into apartment or neighboring residential or keeping someone up late by having the the lighting attenuated in a manner that doesn't cast light that distance, that doesn't have it yeah, bleed into that neighboring property.
Steve, are you still with us?
Yeah.
Do you think that the staff can come up with language to address that issue that Chapin has raised?
Well, maybe, I don't know. That one I was thinking about is he was saying, and I don't know if I do remember, I'm trying to think back to the ball when those EBS panels were approved and the kind of multi-month back and forth process that kind of came out of that. I don't know if I want to repeat that again for a cornice sign. I I think I don't know what the applicants hurried to get this. I I mean, if we wanted to keep this discussion going for two more weeks, I think we might be able to come up with a couple of ideas on how to deal with that concern, but I don't know if I could do that on the fly tonight.
I have one more idea to throw out. I have a decorative light at my house that I really enjoy looking at. And it comes on every night at dusk and goes off at ten thirty. Timer.
Sure. So I think that's one of the options we have. We have pretty wide latitude as we're evaluating text amendments, so we could permit this by right with a limitation that the light is turned off at a certain time. I know Michelle earlier made made a comment that we're moving away from trying to time items, but maybe I'm misremembering that. But that is something we could do as a as a measure here.
Well, what if what if we give the staff the two weeks to try and address these issues that you brought up, that Richard's brought up? Let them come back to us. Hold the hearing open for our action and address it in two weeks.
I am good with that. What is the action we need to take in order to enable that? Because I know we've got a motion right now. I believe Richard moved and you seconded. What do we need to continue this to to our next meeting?
I think you just simply make a motion to continue the deliberation until your next meeting.
Okay.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Question of Steve or staff first.
Go ahead.
Just wondering if if P and Z received any complaints from any people that live in any of the apartment buildings along West Avenue or up at the curb? I can't think of they have a lit sign. Have we received any complaints about this to for them to us kind of you know, almost micromanage this cornice sign?
Not from the sign. We did get some complaints about the mall lighting on the neighbors up above.
Golden Hill?
Closer to the road. I forgot the street that's up there, but closer than Golden.
Okay. Near Walgreens?
Yes, up 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 above that area.
Okay, well, I'm just, that was my, if you saw, if you have a file of that, if you can provide that to us, that might be helpful.
Yeah, and it wasn't specific to signs because the and I think it's Bloomingdale's that's on that side had the facade had lighting built into the wall. Plus, there were internal illuminations going on inside the mall with, I think, an elevator that was really bright that we actually got them to reduce to help dampen the light.
Okay.
Lou, you made a motion. Dan, I'll, yeah, I'll make remake that motion that we hold this discussion open until our next meeting.
Okay, is there a second? Hey, please treat the commission with respect. Thank you. There's a second. We'll do this by a show of hands. All those in favor? All right, it looks like it carries unanimously. We will see you at our next meeting.
We'll see you at the next meeting. I'm sure we'll speak to Steve and come up with language that's satisfactory.
Thank you.
You.
All right. We will move on to our next application. That is twenty twenty-five dash four nine SP. Enrico R. Costantini Esquire two eighty-four New Cannon Avenue. Request to modify special permit number twelve dash sixteen to expand the area of the previously approved contractor's yard and change the stormwater management report and recommended action. So at this point, the public hearing is closed. Yeah. Amelia, did you have something to say before we take our next step and ask for a motion?
Uh, not much. If you guys have any questions, I would be happy to answer them, but you, yeah, there's a couple options for you to take in regards to action on this application. And yeah, once you make your motion, if you make a motion, I'd be happy to pull up the resolution and walk you through it.
Sure. Is there a motion for this application?
I'll move.
Is that a move to approve or move to deny?
To approve.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Oh, what is it we're approving? There were several options. There were three, I believe there were three options.
I think we can discuss them, Lou, before we can.
It will be within the resolution was my understanding, the option.
Yes, I'm sorry, Galen, I didn't catch what you said, but yes, your options are essentially to approve or deny, and you can either if you choose to approve, either approve what staff has provided or you can modify it.
If the commission's comfortable with it, we can move forward with this approval. Make the modifications as we see fit and then confirm that folks are okay with the modifications to the motion. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
Galen, I think you seconded. Is that correct?
I, yes.
Oh, okay. Maybe.
Well, I think somebody else did too, but.
Oh, okay. Well, Tadarius motioned, Galen seconded. Sorry if I did miss someone else. Amelia, do you mind pulling up the resolution? Or maybe that document with the the decision that that might be helpful as a starting point.
Oh, wait, sorry, not the resolution you want to see the done.
Yeah, the summary document that I think you put together earlier today.
All right.
I think this is what
from earlier today, okay.
Yep.
Yep, so yes, he was basically outlining the options, you know, what potentially could happen if you were to deny, if you were to approve as written, and then if you were to approve with any modifications.
I have a question. At the end of this memo, it says in hindsight, you go to that part.
Yeah, sorry, my computer's just scrolling very slowly.
Okay. It says, in hindsight, staff should have insisted on compliance prior to the applicant seeking a modified special permit, compliance with the original approval. And then if you go back up to the first option, which is to deny, that's essentially insisting on compliance with the prior approval.
Yeah, so I think what Steve is saying is when, so when the property received a notice of violation, I don't remember if it was the in the original notice of violation or if it was in the citation hearing process, they were directed to apply for a special permit modification, which is why they submitted this modification, and this has been an ongoing process for, as you are all aware, many months now. So I think in hindsight, do, given to what do, given to what the commission has said about, and a couple commissioners have brought up, why didn't they, why aren't they complying first? So in hindsight, that could have been a better avenue to take is have them demonstrate compliance before they apply for a special permit. But as they were directed to apply for a special permit modification, that is what they did. And the path forward, I mean, I think ideally the applicant would like to use the modification or modify their special permit to achieve compliance with their, with the zoning regulations. So instead of reverting back to the original special permit and achieving compliance, they would like to achieve compliance through a modified special permit. Just based on where we are now and that they were instructed to apply, so they're complying with their notice of violation, essentially.
Reverting back, as is pointed out here, may not address noise issues.
Right.
And they will be required to incorporate any other sound attenuation measures.
And further they don't have.
That makes that option one.
They would be required to comply with the original special permit, which said that they had to comply with noise requirements.
Yeah, the original special permit mentioned that they needed to comply with the noise ordinance, but with their current modification proposal, there are more sound attenuation measures, including relocating the bins and having them face away from the neighbors who are most impacted, constructing that wall, and then everything that was outlined in the sound study, which the third-party consultant that was hired did agree that these proposed measures for the modification would be beneficial to the neighbors noise-wise.
Yeah, I think the way I see option one is reverting back does not necessarily, or does not allow the applicant to take steps to mitigate the noise concerns raised by the neighbors. It sounds like the emergency use is constant, quite frequent, 600 times per year. And given that the noise ordinance has exceptions for emergency uses, I worry that the current approval from 2016, 2017 wouldn't address the noise issues. That said, I'm not really keen on allowing an expansion of use here. I would like to see them demonstrate that they are going to be good neighbors and that they can bring things into compliance, and they do want to address the noise and dust and other concerns that the neighbors have before considering such an expansion of use. So while not on the screen at the moment, I lean towards option three, maybe with some modifications of a a barrier to not allow them to have expanded yard space and possibly moving the sifter into one of the bins as to limit the expansion of bin usage on the site. Those are like two ideas I came up with after seeing this today. And as a part of the prior hearing.
Well, if we do option three, I think we have to include the, all the noise attenuation that would be in option two.
Correct.
Doing option two, but just not letting them increase the volume of the
Of the bins.
Of the bins.
I agree with that. And I think one way to achieve that, because I think they'll need to construct the bins as depicted as a part of their engineering plan. If they move the sifter into that largest bin, that effectively cuts their bin storage in half. And from looking at the site plan and eyeballing it, it looks like it can comfortably fit inside that large bin. So it would limit them from expanding their use to have additional material on site and additional trucks and et cetera. So I think it can address both in the same same manner, if that makes sense.
Do we have to approve these one, you know, as they are written, or can we modify this? Steve, you wrote this up, right?
Steve and I wrote that up together, and you can, yes, you can modify the conditions. I can pull them up if you'd like to take a look at the suggested conditions.
Okay.
Does anyone else have things on this document for Amelia switches? Okay. Do you mind switching over? Thanks.
And then we do have to make, not we, you as the commission need to make a finding due to the notices of intervention that were received, just as a reminder. And to quickly walk you through the resolution, it is quite a long document, so let me know if you want me to bounce around. The first couple of conditions are standard language. Just a lot of it was carried over from that original approval, but kind of updated to how we word things currently. But it's a standard things you see about sediment erosion controls and bonds. And then the what's in red text right now is actually what the applicant had suggested as four conditions. So they're agreeable to these conditions. They sent them over. And then staff tweaked them mostly just to, you know, comply with the, not comply, tweaked them just so that they fit our format. But what's here in red is what the applicant had sent over as suggested conditions with some modifications, again, mostly just grammatical. And then since this was sent to you and posted, Steve and I were talking, and we did think to add another condition highlighted here that when there are emergency calls at night, if once, you know, the machines are done for the night, because sometimes if they get called out twice, they may need to unload, but for the final call of the night, if they're not going back out again, that they just leave the trucks parked where they are, and then they do any offloading or anything potentially noisy like that once operating hours start again at 6:30. And then below this here is what was carried over from the previous special permit approval. And then one more condition that Steve and I added was just that if they violate these conditions, it can be reported to the commission and you can determine appropriate action. This is in the regulations in Article 8.5. So you have the right to do this for any application, and it applies regardless, but we just wanted to add it as a condition more so for emphasis. But yes, Harvey, do you want me to backtrack to a certain condition? Or any questions?
Yeah, condition 14. Given, given that kind of impulse noise events are so central to the neighbor's complaints, it would be great if the cameras can make explicit mention of sound recording or automatic monitoring of noise events above a certain decibel.
So having do you have any suggested language or for how I can alter that condition to your satisfaction?
Um, something like, yeah, like
capabilities, I don't know.
Yeah, audio capability or something like that, because if it's just a camera, it won't do any good unless it has audio.
It'd be audio event capability, something like that.
Yeah. With microphone capable of detecting and logging impulse noise event. And then I had one other suggestion, which was item 24.
Tap that at the end.
I personally think it would be very helpful to clarify that emergencies elsewhere, like if they come back and say, well, this is emergency work, so you know, number 25 doesn't apply to us at all. Like, it would be helpful to clarify that like, something to the extent of, you know, like, emergency work off-site does not constitute an onsite emergency that waves the the noise ordinance or something to that effect.
Which line, Emma, are you referring to on the screen?
25. So the statement from the lawyer last time was, well, we're in compliance because this is all emergency work. So I would suggest clarifying to say you, you know, even if there is a utility emergency elsewhere, that you can't just kind of use the emergency exception 600 times a year to circumvent the noise ordinance. Does that make sense?
Yes, that's why Steve and I had added that other condition to basically limit noise from those emergency calls, but the
Ah, got it, sorry.
Is that the applicant, is that sometimes they do have to go back out multiple times a night? So if they come in and they need to offload materials to respond to another emergency call, but it, once they're, it's done for the night, yes. So that's what that, the condition all the way back up here. Oh, no, it was just right above it. Sorry about that. For condition number 23 in this version is, is saying, is once you come back from the night, once you come back from that emergency call, essentially don't do anything on site until it's standard operating hours again.
Thank you.
But in 25, though, say that any activity, horn blowing, idling of trucks, exhaust discharge, be in compliance with chapter blah, 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 whether or not the activity is a response to an emergency call.
I believe that, and I can double check, but I believe that noise ordinance has an exception for emergencies.
But couldn't we say, we, they'll have to comply with it, but whether or not it's an emergency despite that?
I don't know that we have the power to circumvent ordinance.
Or, I've been based supers.
I feel like there's a philosophical question here, which is that emergencies get a pass, but if your job is emergency response, and that's your entire job, that it's not an emergency. And I feel like that's what Harvey is getting to. The situation that they're going to is an emergency, but it's not like they have an emergency, the work site is on fire, and they have to clang a lot of things really, or not the work site, the actual 284 site. I mean, you know, there's an emergency at the site, there's an unexpected thing at the site. I mean, I guess fire, fire and EMS, they're not subject to noise ordinances when they're driving through town with their sirens on. But if they were constantly clanging and doing things in the building at all hours because their job is all emergencies, and so nothing applies to them, I would feel like that would be a problem. Does that make sense?
Exactly. That was my concern, yes.
I agree. I think we need to put in as much language as we can given their track record.
I mean, I take the point that we can't rewrite the noise ordinance here, but there's nothing stopping us from saying, in addition to the noise ordinance, like, unconditionally, you cannot have impulse events above 80 decibels escaping the property or something like that. Like, is there any reason we can't do that and just?
I mean, I think you could say that, but I think the applicant could then point to the noise ordinance and you know, I don't know that the noise ordinance specifies, you know, exactly what constitutes an emergency, but we could write that it can't exceed 80 decibels, and then they could have an emergency call, and when they violate that noise ordinance, point to their exemption saying that they were responding to an emergency, so they were able to, to use that exemption from the noise ordinance.
But in that case, they might not be in violation of the noise ordinance, but they would be in violation of their special permit. Because the idea is that the special permit is extra stuff.
A good point. That's a very good point.
And back to Darius. We can't really defy that, we can't defy the noise ordinance in that way.
We can't have requirements above, beyond, the noise ordinance says what's not allowed, but is there
We can say more things are not allowed than the noise ordinance says are not allowed. Can't we, Amelia? I don't see any reason we couldn't.
That, sorry, can you clarify what you mean, Galen?
The noise ordinance says what the noise ordinance doesn't allow. We can, and that's what the noise ordinance doesn't allow, but what we don't allow is a different story. We cannot allow whatever we need necessary not to allow for purposes of zoning.
So long as it doesn't conflict with the ordinance itself, it just, we're plugging a caveat or a hole, I guess you're saying.
It's a lower standard due to a specific site-specific use issue based on the fact that this is located in a residential neighborhood and has been causing a ton of problems.
I think one thing that's tricky with this for your conversation, which I think is a good one, is that noises that might happen at 2 o'clock on a Wednesday with all the other noise occurring in the area that happens at 3:00 AM might be significantly louder and have more impact. So I think that's where it gets a little tricky.
So where does that leave?
Good question. And can I, can you, the 80 decibels, was that is that tied, are you tying that back to the ordinance, or are you tying that back to sound report measurements that one of the two consultants had come up with?
80 decibels is the impulse level maximum in the ordinance.
In the daylight?
That sounds like daylight, and then at nighttime, if an impulsive sound occurs more than frequent four hours, then a higher standard applies in the ordinance. So I think daytime is 80 decibels, and if I'm reading the ordinance correctly, if something happens more than four times overnight, then it's like 63 decibels according to table two. I'm new at this stuff, though.
It might be good while the discussion's going, look at it quick to see what the the actual measurements that were taken, you know, what were recorded on the site, because that will kind of inform whether that 80 numbers the right number or not. It might be either way, but just something to double check.
I'm scanning that as quickly as I can. So my very quick read is that like, the tailgate is the only issue. I'm not sure if that's a question, but according to the acoustic measurements, the slamming tailgate is the only thing that would exceed 80 at all. Everything else with the, with the berm or the barrier like averages is roughly 50 and max is roughly 60. It's really the tailgate is the thing.
What about the backup beeping? I thought that was problematic as well.
Reverse alarms were marked in the report as 50 average, 60 max, according to the measurements. I guess that was before they cut down all the trees, though.
And that's also with the existing backup alarms and not the adaptive backup alarms. Is that is that your understanding as well?
Yeah, given, given this report was issued like three years, actually, they modified it, so I'm not sure.
I think the study was done in 2023. I don't think I saw newer numbers than that.
Well, they can prohibit tailgate slamming.
There is a condition in here about
I think it was what the applicant had suggested was yeah, there was a couple, yeah, a couple things of putting it in the employee manual, having subcontractors agree to it and have training to educate people to not slam the tailgates.
And I think there was one more that was along the lines of modifying the trucks in a manner where the impact, I'm scanning for it in the list here.
The tonal backup alarms or?
No, there was something on the tailgate.
Okay.
Maybe I'm misremembering it. I thought I saw a condition in here about modifying the vehicle so that it would reduce the amount of sound.
That might be in condition 11, where so they'll be engaging the acoustic team.
There it is.
Yeah.
Yep, it's right by your cursor. Yeah. Impact points can be acoustically dampened. Yep, exactly. Yep, thank you.
You know, Mr. Chairman, the one thing that has struck me about this application right from the beginning is it's a special permit application to expand in the operations of a contractor yard smack in the middle of a residential neighborhood. I heard the arguments about being exempted from the noise levels because of the emergency work that they do. noise levels because of the emergency work that they do. But I thought the the example that somebody gave about the ambulance is is really what that noise ordinance exemption was about, was fire engines and ambulances and that kind of thing. They're asking for a special permit to operate in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And I think that the emergencies that they respond to don't require the degree of response that the fire department and ambulance does and that they should be made to comply with the noise regulation. And I think that given all of these circumstances, we have the authority to to put that in as a condition, although I'm not the corporation counsel, so I don't know that for a fact. But it would seem to me that, you know, they're asking us to do this, and this is a reasonable condition to put on it, that they can comply with if they want to.
Yeah, the way I'm reading the definitions in the noise ordinance, I have it up here on the other screen, is that emergency work is work made necessary at the site of an emergency to restore property to a safe condition following an emergency. And then it continues a bit more. I think that would, similar to how the applicant has a differing opinion from us on what an expansion means, I think we have a differing opinion on what an emergency constitutes in this case as it relates to the noise ordinance.
So the emergency is the emergency noise would be like under the bridge. Fire.
That's my understanding.
Not like, not like at the company site where everybody jumps into their cars to race to the bridge fire. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, yup, that is, that is how I'm, I'm reading it at least. And so with that, I'm, I'm comfortable with twenty-five as it is. Though if we want to apply something else, I'm, I'm open to suggestions. One thing of note, and I apologize, Harvey, I had forgotten about this from our prior meeting, but unfortunately, you can't be seated for this one as you didn't attend the.
Okay, I know I'm not voting. Okay, I shouldn't talk at all.
Correct. So my apologies, I didn't inform you of that sooner. That is on me. So my apologies there.
I thought I just wasn't allowed to vote. I'm also sorry about that. Okay.
It's, it's all good. It's after, after a motion, that is when. So yup, hopefully this is just a one-off, though. Are there any other discussion or modifications we want to make to item twenty-five here?
I don't think it's, I, I'd like to spell out whoever suggested it, that twenty-five say like, you know, and the commission is clarifying that per the zoning ordinance, emergency work is defined as work that happens at the site of the emergency. And therefore, although this operator one hundred percent does emergency work, the, the sound exemption is for the site of the emergency, not the, not the site of the not their, not their home base or something. I don't know.
I agree.
Because I mean, the way that they're throwing out that it was never an issue, that just really.
Yup. I'm comfortable with that as well. Steve, Amelia, I'm curious if you guys have any input on that. I I would love for Corporation Counsel to be here to weigh in, but in their absence, do you have?
Can we put it in? And then if it's not allowed, they take it out?
Not if you're going to vote on it tonight. We could, we could, if you didn't want to vote and wanted to punt this for two weeks, we could get that information. It's a very good point. And I, the way you're kind of positioning it, I don't disagree with that, but if you wanted to include that or had a question about it, I would recommend not voting on that tonight then, punting that, but I'll leave that.
As much as I, oh, go ahead. What were you gonna say, Galen?
Well, I was just gonna say, I think that's a good idea, but we not vote on it tonight and get an opinion from Corporation Counsel. And if Amelia can go to Corporation Counsel to get the, the opinion, she can ask, how else could it be worth it for the purposes of zoning? Maybe for the purposes of zoning, we don't even need to fight an ordinance, but we can say for the purposes of zoning, you cannot have noise above X, Y, or Z of the site.
So there's two questions for Corporation Counsel, then it's, is the emergency exception to the zoning ordinance applicable to any emergency operations? Or is it only applicable to emergency operations at the site of the emergency?
Well, going to the site of the.
Going to the site of emergency and at the site of emergency, but not the sort of originating work site. And could we require something more conservative than the noise ordinance for the purposes of zoning in a special permit?
Right.
Ordinance says eighty. If we wanted to say seventy, would that be allowed?
I don't, I don't have any problem with your second question, although I think I know the answer to it. But I don't, I, I, I think we should simply state our opinion on the first to the Corporation Counsel. Let him respond to that. Let us say that our reading is that it's the site of the emergency and not the responders' business that is accepted from these rules. And let him respond to that rather than phrasing it in a way that, that might give him more leeway to give us an answer that we don't want.
Sure, I hear that.
Yeah. I, I'm also in support of that. I would like to continue discussion on other conditions and deliberation on this tonight, so that way hopefully next time we bring this up, we can answer that one question on the noise ordinance and then bring it to a vote. Steve, did you have something before I propose maybe two other conditions?
You said exactly what I was gonna say, but just more eloquently.
Thank you, because I'm not driving. Okay, so the two conditions I'd like to propose, if the commission is interested. The first is on, both are related to expansion. I don't have precise language. I'm happy to work towards it if the commission is inclined. But the first is, as it relates to the sifting, to relocate that into the largest bin proposed by the applicant. Give Amelia a chance to type. And the goal of that is to reduce the usable bin space while also ensuring they're able to install the noise attenuation. I don't know that we need to articulate, but yeah. I just wanted to add some more color on, on your, thank you for outlining that. And then the second is to install some form of a barrier along the existing paved line or the edge of pavement as indicated on the site plan. This would still permit them to create the galleries in lieu of the catch basin or the, I'm forgetting the terminology.
The stormwater detention system.
Thank you.
I believe that their wetland approval requires six inch curbing along that. I'm not, but I think it's better to have it as a condition and then it could remain consistent, but I do think that is on there, but I think, yeah, including it here is a good thing, too.
Okay, I am, I'm okay with the curbing and paving going in as as depicted in the site plan as well as in the wetlands approval. What I'm looking for is to not grant an expansion of yard usage until they can demonstrate that they are going to be compliant with noise and dust and light issues that have been raised and that they've been cited for in the violation. So I'd like to see those addressed before we grant additional space within the site for their usage and that expansion.
Chapin, I was under the impression that having larger bins filled with material was going to be one of the things that was going to assist in dampening the noise. And are we working against that by putting the sifter into that largest bin?
It, it seems like it. So I'm happy to have a discussion around, around this. I'm curious how other folks feel as well.
Why do we want to put the sifter in the largest bin?
The, my intention here was to not encourage more material onto site, which seems like an expansion of use would maybe have more truck traffic associated with it, more use of the site because there is more material. That is operating under the assumption that more space for material equals, more material equals more traffic and site usage. And where the, the counterpoint is well taken of material not in bins is material that can't absorb sound.
Maybe we need to leave that as an open issue for our conversation at the next meeting.
I'm happy to.
Can we find out when they use the sifter? Is that a nighttime emergency piece of equipment or just a daytime?
That thing had, the applicant had suggested that the sifter screening operations be limited to occur between eight AM and five PM Monday to Friday, so slightly reduced times than their operating hours.
How would, how would the sifter go into a bin? I don't get that.
Back it in.
But I don't really understand the sifter.
It would just be the location of it. And I think, and Chapin, correct me if I'm wrong, but by putting it in the bin, it would reduce the amount of, you know, materials that they can bring in and off-site. So inherently, it would kind of reduce the capacity of of work for them. So theoretically, there may, there may be fewer trucks coming in and out if there's less space to store materials if the sifter takes up that space. And as the sound engineers have described, by facing the bins away from the neighbors and just having the walls in the bins helps attenuate sound, the sifter is what's really loud. So by putting it in that bin, hopefully the walls would help with sound by or at least from the neighbor's perspective, kind of pointing it away.
Yep, towards, with the bins opening towards the Merritt Parkway.
This might be getting out of our realm, but the applicant doesn't control how much material they bring off of an emergency site. It's a small hole. It's a huge hole. They, they have to bring it somewhere. They don't take it somewhere else.
Okay.
Right? So I, I don't know that we can manage that. It's.
Okay.
I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm just saying, do we have control over that? I don't think so.
I mean, from the sidewalk, it seems like their bins were overflowing with material. They certainly had more than what their, their bins capacity were. So Tammy, I disagree. It seems like the size of the bins doesn't necessarily dictate how much they, they bring onto site. I am happy to strike this one.
We require them to cover the bins, don't we? You know, we have the sprinklers and they have to cover them.
They have to spray water on them.
For dust, dust suppression.
Yeah.
And Tammy, I think the idea too is that if they have, you know, if their current site can't handle the capacity of work that they have, they, and you know, if they're outgrowing their site, if they're getting a lot of work or a lot of material, then it's, and if it's too much for the property to handle, they may need to explore, you know, expanding their business and opening other sites and other places to take material if the commission does not feel that the scope of work is appropriate for that site.
Thank you. Very. I have a question slash thought. I've driven around the neighborhood with, you know, the, the cutting that they did and the plantings that have been replanted that, you know, they're very small. And you can sort of see right through to the work site. Would we ask the applicant to offer to the neighbors to put some type of evergreen screening on the neighbor's property if they wanted it? And I know they can't plant things that are not native in the wetlands, but the property owner could plant something on their non-wetland portion that would screen looking at all of this equipment.
Yeah, even not directly in the wetland, staff would not advise planting non-native species. We would definitely encourage planting native species. And in their previous approval in twenty sixteen, I know there was an agreement with one neighbor that they, and that was outlined in their original condition that they had to do specific plantings for screening purposes for that neighbor.
And did any of the, I don't recall any of the neighbors that spoke. I don't think any of them asked for that, but just tossing it out there because it might build goodwill.
I, I agree with it. Oh, go ahead, Steve.
The applicant did state that they had offered to do that. I don't, oh, you know, again, I don't recall the neighbors stating that or not. You could put it in there as, you know, require the applicant to reach out to the neighbors and ask them if they want screening, but I don't know. The applicant can't compel the neighbors to accept the screening.
Right. Oh, absolutely. Wouldn't force it on them. I mean, so just a thought.
Yeah. Tammy, is that something you'd like to propose as a condition here, that the applicant reach out to neighbors and offer screening on their properties?
Yes.
Is that phrased?
Sure. If desired, you know.
On their property.
Right, on their property. And I think it should be tree screening. They, that, I wouldn't want to imply that the neighbor could then ask for mafia blocks on their property.
Vegetative is a good word. And we've done this before for other applications, as I recall, that we've asked for the applicant to provide screening for others. So to lose the earlier point, I'm happy to come back to number twenty-four in our next discussion and we can talk about that more. Is there any discussion around proposed item number twenty-five?
That one, just for anyone's edification, that one would also require, which I can do now or for your next meeting, I would need to, because the first condition is that the site be constructed or altered in accordance with the approved site plan. So because that condition doesn't negate, but that condition doesn't match the site plan, I would, I'm just going to go through before your next meeting and I'll highlight everything for the changes. But I would go through and anything that references the site plan, amend it to include that boundary.
Well, right, because where is that? Chapin, when you suggested that, I was envisioning that you meant on the survey that we have on the, I believe it's the southern edge of the property that runs parallel to the parkway.
Yes.
That, is that what you meant? So I think if we do want to add that, it should be a little more specific. And it, you're not asking for a mafia block. You're just asking for a curb to keep water from running into the wetland. Is that?
No, so it's, initially at our last hearing, I had asked for a fence, although they raised that there are other barriers they could use. If we could be more generic in our language, a mafia block, for example, could be that. The, the intention is to not allow them to use that additional land for their, for their operations until they've proven that they've like been able to address noise, dust, and other concerns.
An encroachment preventer, in other words.
Exactly. Yes. Yup. That sounds like a marketable.
What could we just put, the applicant cannot encroach on the wetland on the south side of the property if that is truly the direction?
So it's not the wetland exactly. There's a, the applicant's proposing to expand directly to where the wetland is along that property line. And then the inland wetland agency said no, and they required a twenty-foot vegetative buffer, but there still is, even with that buffer, about, I think, an additional like twenty, twenty-five foot expansion of the yard area. So what Commissioner Bryce is suggesting is don't allow that expansion of the yard there right now. Allow them to implement all those noise attenuation measures and the reconfiguration of the yard within its current boundaries. And then if the applicant can demonstrate to the commission satisfaction that they've implemented all of these conditions, they can come back and modify the permit to allow that expansion to where Wetlands has approved it now.
So until they perform, they would not, they cannot do that.
Exactly. Yep.
Okay.
Are there any other items we'd like to discuss on this before continuing to our next meeting? All right. This is might be our longest running application. Is there a motion to continue this to our next?
So moved.
Thank you, Lou. Is there a second? Thank you, Lou. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Tammy. Uh, let's do a show of hands. Um, all those in favor? All right, that is unanimous. Right, and the, um. Item is moved to our next meeting. Uh, let me pull up the agenda. All right. Uh, so next up is the acceptance of the minutes for October twenty-second. Um, are there any modifications, uh, to those minutes? All right, is there a motion to approve? Thank you, Darius. Thank you, Tammy. Uh, we'll do a show of hands. All those in favor to approve? Uh, any, uh, knows? Any abstentions? Thank you, Anna.
I fell asleep.
Thank you for joining us for as long as you could the other night. It was a late night. And thank you, Harvey, for, uh, for your first meeting, hanging out with us also late. Appreciate that. Uh, next is the comments of the director. Uh, Steve, are you in a good position for any comments you have?
Uh, I don't have any, so that I'm in a good position, but don't have any comments.
Great. Are there any comments of commissioners? Uh, Mr. Schuman, I, I remember earlier you pulled up, uh, wanting to talk about. The sixty percent AMI. Is that a discussion you'd like to have tonight or would you like to come back to that at a later meeting? Lou?
Come back to it. I, I, I think it, uh, is gonna take a little bit of time.
Okay. That sounds good. Any other comments? Of commissioners? All right, is there a motion to adjourn? All right, Anna moves. Tammy seconds. All those in favor? Thank you all. Have a great night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Matt?